Yes, I know, why me both of us?
Good, how are you bud?
Good, good.
So, so you guys were over there yesterday trying to keep that wind from blowing everything down.
It was bad.
Animals.
Wild, a wild. I have their husband, I know him. Because I definitely don't want his property. George had put it into. Conservation. Get some good audio. Yeah, you have to have a plan, you have to. But you're not able to go into commercial.
They built that wall for it, buddy. That's interesting. Come on, we can't even use it in this.
Just out of curiosity. There's water, some gases in there, you know, I'm not certain, can I make my mistake a butthole? That right, the last person speaks, I'll just be next, okay, thank you. Mr. Isman, how are you?
Good.
Good. He's in the. He's in the corner. How about you in the corner?
Why are you in the corner?
What's going on? Hey, what's you? I'm not.
That's great, great.
You're on call.
All your life? I'm trying to write a good job, I am.
It's a pretty good way.
I'm throwing a chair up.
Oh. Mr. Jennings, I don't think we've ever met, Demay Sandoval.
Met you when I was a kid.
Oh, do you? How, how'd that? You came by our house with Robert, oh, are you serious? For me as an adult, or my parents' house?
Your parents' house.
My parents' house, yeah. Nice to meet you.
You too.
Hey, there with you, I'm sorry.
He's been doing that all the time. Yeah. On my bike. Yeah. I can go on and off.
I agree. What's going on in the winter day?
Uh, just part of the day, still got really bad. She was blowing my trailer around and she's. It was crazy. Yesterday.
Yeah. Just an agreement to do service for them.
Funny how much we think alike, that was in my.
Well, I wanted to make sure I paid it and I didn't make it back from town on time and I was like, dang it.
Yeah.
I went so $430.
Oh, yeah, went way up. We've got to make sure it's right though, because.
I think it's right, for the most part.
By what, 32 cents?
We're hard, that's just coming in the walls.
Yeah.
That was.
Tumblewee's race across.
All boy around, Leo.
Because I can drive, but yes, in you.
Yeah.
Is Ms. Goldman gonna be on, Ms. Davis, do you know?
Yes.
Oh.
Wow. Unexpected answer.
To Roswell patient letter.
Hey, the time is now 6:00 PM, we'll go ahead and call this February 21st, 2023, regular meeting of the Walsenburg City Council to order. Ms. Barr, could you please give us a roll call?
Barbara. Thanks. Here, here, here.
Mr. Jennings?
Here.
Look, May's.
Air.
Look, Vio.
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Here.
May Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels? Oh, come on. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Vio, would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance there?
In pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under our heart, individual, liberty, and for all.
Okay, moving on to approval of this evening's agenda, do we have a motion for this item?
We'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Vio, do we have a second?
Not second.
A second by Mr. Jennings, is there any discussion? Would like to.
Hold on, sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to make a quick note that Ms. Avila with. Town Aguilar will not be attending this evening, I guess the town board there had scheduled a special meeting. And so she's asking to possibly speak with us on the 20, March 21st, if we still desire to do so.
Where is she at? On the agenda?
Number four G. Under unfinished business, but I would ask the council to maintain the topic under discussion and direction.
Yes.
No, that's all I had, was there anything else from council?
Well. I don't know if anyone wants to do this, but I'd like to see K5 move to last on the list instead of. First time new business. If they don't.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, wasn't.
Okay.
Okay, was there any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Barr, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Vio?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
May Brian?
Yes.
Moving on to consent agenda approval, consent agenda allows for the expedited approval of routine items that do not require city council discussion. The council member wishing to discuss a specific consent agenda item may make that request prior to approval of the consent agenda. The item will then be moved to the regular agenda where it will be discussed within this evening's consent agenda, all we have is a liquor license renewal for first choice market. Do we have a motion for our consent agenda this?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vio, is there any discussion? And Ms. Barr, could you please call for the vote?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
May Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Moving on to approval of the February 7th, 2023, regular meeting minutes, do we have a motion for this item? Motion to approve by Mr. Martinez, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vio, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Barr, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
May Brian?
Yes.
Mr. Vio?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Ms. May? Mr. Jane?
Yes.
Thank you, moving on to staff reports. Ms. Vera, did you have anything in addition to the written report that you submitted to council?
No, I don't have anything, I might have a comment or two on the Aguilar discussion.
Thank you, moving on to city administrator, Ms. Davis, did you have anything in addition to the report that you submitted to the council?
I neglected to include in the report. CDOT has touched base with us, we should have some additional information. But they're proposing to initiate some of the work on the bridge replacement on I-25 that's over the railroad tracks and. Highway 10.
Oh, and David was talking to me during the ride again. All right.
And I believe that their timeline is for approximately March 15th, but they're, they have a. Company that they have contracted with to assist with public information and we should be. Hearing more about specifics on that within the next week or so.
Thank you, are there any questions from council for Ms. Davis, Mr. Vio? Mr. Jennings?
I was just wondering if you had a chance to look into the FOCO growth?
I have preliminary information on my desk, but that's about as far as I've gotten. I believe we do have a timeline through the end of 2023 for their requirements in terms of lift station and infrastructure.
Okay.
We have a little time, but it is. Clock is ticking.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Ms. R, did you have anything?
Um. Question about, well. Under equipment, you have city personnel and a mechanic from Ferris Machinery repaired the street sweeper. And I don't know if you saw my email today. I was questioning you on that because I thought we had discussed that personnel should not be repairing equipment due to liability and other issues.
If you will note there that it was Ferris Machinery who did it and that they were assisted by city persons.
And they were still assisting, so, so city crews were able to repair the rotor. So that it's functioning, but we need to be really careful because we do not have a certified mechanic. So they should not be doing any work. And then it goes down to vehicles. You put out an RFB. For a routine maintenance only vehicle repair?
It's affirmative.
Why is it only routine maintenance, we need a mechanic to.
Maintenance ma'am is the only thing that you can truly identify as a legitimate bid process. You'll also note that in the RFB, it requested the shop rates as well as the mechanics them to identify. How they determine, there's. Trade books, if you will, that identify that, for example, if you're going to change a starter, it takes X number of hours and that's how most quotes. Designed from a mechanic shop standpoint, requesting that information. Up maybe a kind of. View. How anything above and beyond routine maintenance is identified and repaired.
So. We have any other contracts with repair personnel?
Ma'am.
So.
On an as need basis.
Okay, but if. We need maintenance on them, shouldn't we have a contract with someone?
Routine maintenance is what we have put out to bid.
I know that, but we are giving our trucks and that to Ferris and blah, 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 and blah, 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 do we need a contract with someone?
To find. So if you, if you. We're both, that a lot of times that particular equipment is not handled locally. The street sweeper specifically. Ferris Machinery is, that's their, part of their line of work, they have access to the right. Repair parts as well as the expertise to repair it. A lot of times. You won't find local maintenance facilities that can accommodate that unique equipment, they just don't have the background. The expertise or the certification to accommodate.
Well, why aren't these on the agenda themselves? Because we don't really get a chance to vote on these or say anything about.
If I may, I believe our first meeting in February through a vote of the council, we had actually directed Ms. Davis to submit the same RFB. Is that correct, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
But not for routine maintenance, that was not my understanding. So we don't get to see these things that have kind of happened, so what about this water hall where you're seeking direction from the councils to whether they would like to limit this?
So, so specifically? The limitation is already in ordinance, it's 1,000 gallons on a monthly basis. We've identified a method and a means to be able to. Control and manage that. I want, I'm seeking authorization from the city council to notify our water hall contracts. Of, A, some of them are old enough that they may not be aware or have forgotten the limitations. So we want to use it as both an opportunity to educate. Fell as inform and then to notify that as of March. If that's the will of the city council to. Place those constraints on their particular accounts, so when they reach 3,000 gallons. For the month, their account is locked, if you will, and they won't be able to utilize their cards. Until the next month.
Okay, water hall applications must be renewed on an annual basis, correct?
No.
I think we're supposed to be getting new. Information and a new fee. And I'll have to find that because I thought it was in my book, but it's not, and I did give that to you, but I believe they do need to be renewed every year. And a new fee, and it also says subject to city council approval, so I don't know about that one, but I know, and I'll make this quick. The water taps and sewer taps. Those are also supposed to come to council, these are copies of. Water and sewer taps that have come to council, so water, Sydney council needs to see any water and sewer caps. We need to approve those before, you know, they get put in, so just FYIs.
Do you have anything else, Ms. R?
Oh, well. No, I guess that's it for now.
Thank you. I noticed that I came in late on Friday and we were just talking about it at our last meeting, but the congressionally directed spending requests, I saw that Senator Bennett's office had opened that up. I'll go ahead and forward that email to you and here later on during council comments, directions and reports, I'd. Like to discuss that with council again, I know we had tossed around some of our chief priorities mainly being the. Broad water line and or gas line, but I'd like to explore that more and hopefully you can fit it into the schedule to. Get a request out since could save a lot of headache from the normal hustle and bustle with the grant.
A good.
Cycle, so, Mr. Martinez, did you have anything, sir? Ms. Mays?
So on the vehicles, you talked about the, what was your word? I don't know, that you return to vehicle inspection program, does that include mileage logs with gas? When people guess that they're doing mileage logs that go with those gas receipts?
So with our, the particular gas cards that we utilize. You have to, it's called a wax card, so in addition to it being attached to a specific vehicle. You have to input that vehicle number, you also have to put the mileage in based upon. What you're fueling at the time, so we get that independent of. The vehicle maintenance log.
But there's no like mileage log, like. For instance, today I got in my car, I put the date, I put where I was, I gassed up, I went to Trinidad, I wrote I went to Trinidad, I came back to Trinidad, I logged my miles. So I can go back and look at that log and know where I went for day to day.
Right, you don't have a day to day basis.
Why don't we fill in? We, we just don't feel it's necessary to track where these vehicles are going on a day to day basis?
If they're predominantly in town, I'm not sure that that's an efficient use of employees' times.
It takes seconds to do a mileage log, I'm just saying. My other question is the bus staying outrider, you mentioned CDOT, are you doing any coordinations with COG because COG is going to be the one who is running that CDOT or that busing program?
I'm, I'm waiting for them to kind of help coordinate what that looks like in terms of use of the train depot or the parking lot or, you know, I'm. Just trying to keep it on my radar and. Figure out what it is that they're really looking for because at this juncture, I don't have anything concrete.
Okay, and kind of just to echo what Ms. Laura said about the water hall, I think it is something we need to revisit and, you know, we need to look at that as council. And if residents are paying monthly fees, then water hall people should pay at least annual fees if nothing else. It's not, you know, they don't pay that much more to come and haul water that we pay for it to come to our homes and we're paying. A very high rate to get that water at home with all the fees that we pay, so I think it's something that this council has to address.
So anything else from council for Ms. Davis? And we'll move on to city accountant, Mr. Moore, did you have anything in addition to the written report that you provided, sir?
No, I don't have anything in addition, if the council has questions, I'll be happy to. Respond.
Thank you, sir, Ms. Mays, did you have anything to say? Mr. Martinez?
No, I don't have anything, sorry.
Uh, yes, but. Um, well, I already sent an email on that one, so hopefully I'll get a response soon. Um. For. Well. I, I didn't realize this was on here, I've been researching. Ordinance 965 and 1160, I see it's a number six here. I've have asked about this before, so what is the process for. Turning off someone's gas or water?
The process is the language. And. 13840, I believe, that says that if you. Provide notice. To the utility customer. Of the. Amounts that are due for payment. And the dates that the payments are due on the billing statement. Then you have provided sufficient notice, so notice has been. Accounted for in terms of the shut off process. The specific dates are accounted for and the amounts that are due are accounted for. So the city proceeds to follow the information that appears on the billing statement. To process any delinquent accounts that require shut off. To ordinance.
Okay, and you said it was 13840?
I believe that's the correct reference.
Is that an ordinance or resident, because we don't go that high. Some Unicode. Um, yeah, because. Ordinance says we need to red tag people, so. If there's an ordinance, I think we have to follow the ordinance.
So you've mentioned red tag and red tag has been discussed recently as a concern by several people. And I did a search through the municipal code to find all references. Red tag and the only thing that came up under red was, was red flag and. And a couple of other mentions of red other. Topics, there is nothing in the city municipal code. Well, well, it says red tag.
And an important thing to point out though, with the codification of those ordinances, there is a repeal of. Any ordinances, so perhaps these ones referring to the red tags were ones that were repealed. There's a table that we can actually look at, I believe in the municipal code, sort of cross reference what might have been. Stricken before being formally codified.
Right, so, so I don't have any further guidance on, on use of the red tag. So if that is a requirement, then we'll need to identify that and.
And I would think ASAP.
So in 1160, letter 2E, it says a city shall mail or hand deliver the written notice within three calendar days of making the discovery of tampering. So it really does lay out like everything that needs to be done. And I'm just concerned that we're not following this.
There's a series of steps that are outlined. Ordinance eleven sixty, those steps are also incorporated into the city municipal code. And the city municipal code would appear to have conflicting language. So the sections that you refer to uh do appear in the city municipal code as a procedure. Uh, also in the administrative part of the city municipal code, there is a language that says that if these conditions are met, then you have satisfactory uh with uh able to proceed with the shut off. So I have passed that question on to make sure we get clarification. There does appear to be conflicting language. So uh certainly put that on to further expertise, identify what may or may not be correct procedure.
Thank you, sir. I.e. legal counsel.
Yeah, that's something I'll look into. If there's, if there's conflicting language, then we might need to amend the code to make sure that everything is up to date. And I don't know ordinances, whether they're repealed or active or in the code.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jennings, did you have?
I have no.
Uh, Mr. View. Uh, nothing further from council. We'll go ahead. Yes, Ms. Laura?
I was going to ask also about your expenditures to comparison uh report. This is only for the month of January. And uh other employee benefits seem to be really high for the gas fund. Uh, you have already sixty two point eight percent of budgeted amount. So I think that's something that needs to be looked into as well as there's a lot more of the other employee benefits. So here's another one, twenty two point five. Go to just about any page. Um, some of them are okay. This one's only fifteen. Uh, but it seems to be that um we're already almost over budget on some things. The workers compliment uh on the gas fund as well is forty point one. IT services um is high already. I know you budgeted like eight hundred thousand dollars or some other stuff, but uh I think we really pay attention to this. Um, the revenue is good when it's over. I like that amount. Uh, small equipment for sewer fund. Budget at twenty five hundred dollars. You already spent fourteen hundred, so you already used fifty seven point six of that budget. I don't know what you used it. Uh, maybe to fix the router on the, I don't know. Anyway, I think uh a lot of these, again, just for the few lines we're seeing in employees um that are going over or high. For this is just one month. This is just January's budget that you. I think we need to revisit all the numbers too. I don't think those are the right numbers. I mean, have the chance to completely review everything, so.
I do have one question. Uh, number three, um, you talk about the money from John Hancock. And I don't know, this answer might help me with this. Who decides what you do with that money? Because it sounds like you've already made a decision of what you're doing with the money and council hasn't even talked about. They're saying that there's seventy five thousand dollars there for employees who have left before their money was vested. And it sounds like you've already kind of made a plan with it without any discussion by council. I mean, is that?
Oh, the.
Whose authority is that?
The eligible uses for that money is limited by John Hancock. So uh that use is allowed. There is no other outside of John Hancock use that we can apply those funds to. And considering the the size of that pool that has uh been left unattended, that would be the most only we can make of the funds. So it's it's not that there's any latitude. We can't pull, we can't withdraw those funds and apply them to any other application for business. There in the scope of the John Hancock business. Uh, I didn't get a list of all the eligible uses, but then what we do with business with John Hancock.
I just felt it like warrants conversation and not just like this is what we're gonna do. Um, you know, because it's thirty thousand per year. So what happens with the remaining funds? Seventy five, while you spend thirty a year, where does that money sit? Does somebody gain interest on it? Where is it?
I haven't looked into whether or not they're giving us any interest on those funds that's in their bank. If they're.
And that's what I'm saying. So is there something else we can do to benefit current employees? And maybe use that now and put it in their accounts now where if, you know, if John Hancock is making money off of it, or if city employees could benefit from it.
So no doubt they're paying us some degree of interest on funds, but the we could only give the money in terms of what an employee would earn or to what the city pays either is a cost to the city. So this allows for simple accounting to have the city's budget of three percent uh expended. I can track the record very easily without doing extra labor to identify how it might be spread if we were to alternatively distribute those funds to employees instead of doing that from the bank account. So using the bank account to do the employee benefit payment is done with the payroll automatically, and it's much more complex.
So what happens with the money that was budgeted to pay the city's contribution part if you're going to use this money to pay that contribution?
Uh, that budget will be left unused.
So that's what I'm saying. So that should be a condition that we should be having. What are we going to do with that money?
If there's nothing further from council for Mr. Moore, we'll go ahead and move on to uh city treasurer, Ms. Barr. I see that you've uh provided us your bank balance report. Did you have anything in addition uh to your enclosure? Uh, does council have any questions for uh Ms. Barr? Uh, yes, Ms. Laura?
Um, I think I asked this before, and I know it's now found in the uh budget report. But could we see the URA amounts on the bottom final line?
The URA funds are now incorporated in the city.
That's what I just said. I know that. But I'd like to see the fine item because they still have their own budget.
Does, is that a request of all the council?
I mean, it'd be nice to know what we're working with, the URA.
This is the desire of council at the appropriate time in the agenda. I'd encourage you to place a motion. If there's uh nothing further from Ms. Barr, we'll go ahead and move on to citizens' comments. I'd like to remind everybody that there's a three minute time limit. We'll go ahead and work through our folks in house first that have assigned the sheet. And then we'll get to anybody on Zoom that may wish to speak. Uh, who do we have first this evening, Ms. Barr?
Thank you, ma'am, for pointing that out.
Welcome.
Now, I I I first want to lay out what my intentions are. Um, I learned a lot since I've been here. Um, and what I plan on doing is when I bring up an issue, the next time I want to review it. And what I want to do is build a punch list of things that I think that the council can help, everybody can help accomplish to improve. Um, one of the things I wanted to add, if our uh top water is so safe to drink, I invite anybody to drink a glass, a cup of it. I don't care. But for the real things here, last week.
And I will, but where did that?
If if you're hesitant because of that, I understand.
I mean, I'll go get water down the hall.
Well, 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 and i- if I may, council, so we're not getting bogged down with political theater here. Perhaps at the end of our meeting, anybody that would wish to see elected officials drink water, they could follow us to the tap. And uh, most of us are skeptical and our mothers warned us against drinking water out of containers that strangers give us. So no offense, sir.
Uh, none taken at all. Thank you for recognizing this. Um, but I do want to talk about the water because of last time. And what I would like to see is, and I haven't heard anything yet, a root cause analysis, not just of the individual problems, but of the entire system so that we know what we're dealing with and what we need to, my next request, make a long term plan. A long term plan, uh, it needs to be coordinated with the county and the state. I mean, it's a, it's very complicated. I understand that. Um, but a single step, I think would go a long way. Um, I I'm also uh curious about um if we've applied for grants from the state to the federal level. I don't know how it works, um, but uh have we applied for grants to improve the infrastructure of our water system? I did very briefly, my second item uh is are are the utilities and the billing problems. Uh, I thought the representative from Aguilar would be here today, uh, but I'll be brief. Uh, I think the entire system should be audited if we're having all these problems. Um, I know auditing the entire system would be an expensive proposition and take a long time. Uh, but uh our billing should be accurate. And and an idea that I had was uh listening to the shut off things. If there's a shut off notice or something like that, maybe those accounts should be audited first to see if they really should be shut off. Uh, just an idea. Uh, now on to uh my new items. Um, I have law enforcement, law enforcement concerns. The sheriff's office is contracted by the city. Uh, what is the city doing to put pressure on them uh to do something about the increasing property crimes? And and now this rash of uh people are saying animal control, but really the problem is enforcing the laws on animal abuse and uh and 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 the like, and and these things will happen.
Uh, thank you for sharing your concerns, Mr. Bombrea. We've gone over time, but just to touch on a few of the more important uh uh topics. Uh, as far as a long term plan, uh, actually, my predecessor, Mayor Lander and uh the council at the time with a few remaining uh uh members that are here had actually worked with DOLA to uh get a basically long term plan like uh you had uh looked at, uh, well, not totally comprehensive at this point. It certainly lays out a roadmap moving forward for both our water and sewer infrastructure. Uh, so uh, yes, sir, uh, it it's a nice step, uh, that's already there. And uh, the city is already uh working towards knocking out some of that punch list. The council at the time felt that the sanitary sewer was of greater priority. So uh, the first work that began with that was city crews in cooperation with Colorado Rural Water and GMS uh locating all of our manholes and other various uh basically wastewater features throughout the district. Uh, at this point, there still are a number of manholes that uh are lost basically to time. But uh, we were able to uh actually get the city at the time was able to get funding uh to complete that study. And uh, now we're moving forward. Uh, Ms. Davis could probably uh speak more to that. But uh, that JDS hydro uh, see uh if we can maybe get that out on the website, so.
That would, that would be great. Uh, that would be a wonderful thing to be able to look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, sir. Uh, who do we have next, Ms. Barr?
Mr. Bonasselli, you want to talk about the water and sewer?
Yeah. I'm about to tell you, and I came here on a couple of things. Anyway, I had uh put in an application for my water and sewer on seven four twenty two. And the application did not run through until two months later, games playing, being played. Uh, nine one twenty two. And uh, I finally got my water in in November. I'm still waiting for my sewer. I can't do anything with the new home that I built until I have a sewer in. I'm waiting for that tap. Can you tell me what's going on with that?
I can, sir. It's not very nice. So your main sewer line is in Welton in the middle of the street. Would be happy to tap there, but I don't believe that you're going to be able to unless you put in a lift.
Water, we went through it when I got to have my water, our sewer tap is down the alley.
So.
Is down the alley.
Well, the problem with that, sir, is that there's only about fifty to sixty feet of sewer line in that alley and it's clear at the other end. So that sewer line would have to be extended about two hundred and twenty feet with two manholes. Which unfortunately is is not a service of the city.
Is not a service of the city. It's the city of Walthamburg.
That's correct, but the extension of that is not something that becomes a part of of the city cost. Because the sewer system is already in place for those residents with the exception of your new home. And it was unfortunately the intent of those houses on Welton to go into the sewer line on Welton.
No, it it was never the intent because that the sewer on that first house goes where?
Which first house?
The first house on the corner. It goes down the alley.
Which corner?
On uh, the Welton, one hundred block, block of Welton.
Right, so there's second street, Welton, second. And then the sewer line comes all the way, yeah, comes down second, turns down Welton and goes all the way down Welton. Turns on Pine and then goes down Pine.
Right. But I'm talking about on my alley, on the one hundred four Welton block. That sewer line is at the beginning of the alley and it comes in.
At at the north end of the alley.
It's on the north end of the alley and it comes down. And so, no, there, and so.
Doesn't come all, because then you're running uphill.
What?
So you're, the sewer line off of Pine comes down between um Welton and what is that stout?
Yeah.
So it only comes a part of the way up that alley and it's not very far.
Yeah, yeah, but it's still running downhill.
Correct, but there is no sewer line for you to tap.
But there is for the first house. And so that area is, they gave me the.
So so I think maybe to at the, not take it out of the expense of these people, if you'd like to come in tomorrow, we can sit down and we can look at the maps or I could meet you at your house, either way.
Well, you guys, I paid for a sewer tap. I got a water tap after months and now you're telling me that I have to put in uh pump to go up to the sewer?
I I have limited locations on where the sewer is, sir, and I'm not sure where the conversations were. I'm coming into this late in the game, obviously. But all I can tell you is where the sewer is currently.
And I know where the sewer is currently. And I know where it is and that they can tap into it. And that's not an issue because it's downhill and it goes into that and it's not into the first manhole. It's in that that one manhole would service everything. And another thing that can be done is they can go straight across the road there or at the alley and uh pick it up with all of those other houses that go uh straight down.
Mr. Bonasselli, perhaps uh tomorrow with your meeting with Gay Davis, uh, you all could explore some of these alternate options. Uh, I I apologize, but uh we're getting slightly over on time, sir. Mr. Bonasselli, perhaps, uh, tomorrow with your meeting with Gay Davis, uh, you all could explore some of these alternate options. Uh, I, I apologize, but, uh, we're getting slightly over on time, sir.
Yeah, another, yeah. Another thing is, uh, the quality of life around here with, uh, all this shutdown, big, uh, on, off water, uh, what is? How much is it costing us to have somebody from out of town come in and service every water break?
They don't service every water breaks, sir, but the main breaks they do come in and service.
It wouldn't it be a lot cheaper to put somebody in and house?
Yes, sir. If I had the personnel available and could hire them, yes, sir, absolutely. We are advertising and as of yet we have no current operators.
Uh, Herman knows every single valve in this, uh, town.
He's not necessarily an operator, sir, but I appreciate input on that.
And then another thing is water reports. When was the last water report turned in? To the state.
Uh, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, we got that in for our hysterical horizontal. Our usage, our water usage history.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll come in and see what we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Bombasoli.
Mike Everwine. Proactive administration.
It's Mike Everwine. Just a little side note, um, before I talk about the administration, um, I do drink the water every day, all day. Um, we have actually purchased our own test strips. Verify that the water is safe to drink and there's nothing. But, um, we got eighteen different chemicals that are tested for, um. Don't have any problems with the water that comes out of our tap at, at the house and at the business. Um, this it's my opinion. And I don't have to drink his, I drink mine all day, every day. So, um, what I wanted to talk about was, wanted to say, um, specifically about the the information that was provided by Gay, by Ms. Davis, um, on the, um, the recall. Um, I want to say thank you. This is this is to me very, um, encouraging that we have a city administrator that provides this kind of information with you guys to review and discuss. Um, we've all seen what happens when city administrator is not proactive and does not do the homework and stands up here like this in front of all of you. Um, I want to give you kudos. Because I appreciate what you're doing. And this is the kind of professional stuff that'll make us a better town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everwine.
Caroline Robb, she wants to speak about the recall.
Evening, Ms. Robb.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to ask a question. I pretty much know what the answer is going to be, but I'm going to ask you anyway. On, um, December twentieth, you did indicate, um, that if you were if a council member, including yourself, were recalled, that you would consider resigning. Do you remember that statement?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, and you're aware of how many votes were gathered?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where do you stand on that?
Well, right now I stand in the actually place where council was a few weeks ago, uh, I'm going to exercise my right to protest. And I'd like to remind you and the other recall committee that this is, process is far from over. The citizens have the ultimate say in who is recalled. Somebody can be up for recall, but not necessarily recalled. The citizens will have the ultimate say. And, uh, that's all. Speak on that issue.
Okay. Like I said, I figured I knew what you were, were going to say. It wasn't the same thing as what you had said on the twentieth of December, but okay. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Ms. Robb.
Oh, I will. Soon.
Cynthia Cresswell, she wants to speak of the account report question and shut off.
Good evening, here, Council. Attorney Moore. Davis. Bar. Uh, I'm going to go backwards, um, on what I started to. The issue for the shut offs. I know I did bring it up and I know it's been touched on already this evening. Um, however, uh, when you say that you make annotations within the bills as to what's owed and what's not, okay? Granted, anybody doesn't pay their bills, knows they haven't paid their bills, okay? But you grant exceptions, number one. Aguilar. And shut off Walsenburg residents. But if the bills don't come out in a timely fashion, then the only way to circumvent people not knowing about shut offs is to put a tag in the mailbox on the front doorknob or something like that. Um, just a consideration. Okay, like I said, they know they haven't paid their bills, but if you get your bill after your services are shut up and that kind of defeats the whole purpose. So I just wanted to touch on that. Um, the other item is a question. I don't have an accounting mind. Um, I love numbers. I did not like accounting, so I dropped my bookkeeping and accounting classes. However, in your report on page seventeen and fifty-four, you have items O two dash O nine dash forty-eight fifty-two and forty-eight fifty-three. We have a late fee totaling the amount of thirty-four eighty-four sixty-one. If you could explain that, it's under the, um.
What's the account number again?
Uh, O two, O nine, forty-eight fifty-two. It's under the gas fund proceeds on activities.
Yeah, the gas late fee, let me pull it up here. I was just there and I see.
And also the O two, O nine, forty-eight fifty-three, we have a non-sufficient fund charge for twenty-five dollars. So if there's any way you could explain that to myself, citizens of Walsenburg that are on Zoom that are here. Um, I would appreciate that. And if it could be avoided by not having a single point of failure for, uh, additional signatory authorization? To pay, pay the bills?
What do you mean?
Okay, if we have a late fee and it's because a check wasn't written and sent off or online or whatnot, um, due to an illness or vacation or somebody not being in the office for whatever reason and a backup signatory autho- autho- authorized person, excuse me, could stop that from happening possibly?
So on, say, for example, if you had an account and uh, you were unable to make the payment in a timely fashion and you wished someone else to do that for you, um, we.
But I'm, I'm an individual, I'm not a city. And as an individual, my credit would be affected by it just as the city's effect, um, credit is affected and the ability to get grants or loans or whatnot.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I followed what the, what the thought was. So in terms of these accounts.
Well, if you could explain why we had a late pay and an insufficient fund fee.
Uh, the insufficient fund fee is for those checks that bounce. So, so in the example where, uh, someone does make a payment and there's not adequate funds in the bank, that's a, a standard fee to collect, which is, uh, per the city ordinance. So the, the city is currently collecting that as a basis on the ordinance. For the, uh, late payment fee, of course, that's a, a percentage as well as a flat, I think five dollars to begin with. And then we add any percentage. So, um, if someone has a large outstanding balance, uh, a lot of effort will go into the administration of, to deal with the account. It creates additional labor.
Right, okay, so we, so I, I think maybe.
Part of the problem is, is this is a revenue to the city. It's not a cost to the city. This is what we have collected in January.
Is that correct?
Right.
So we're collecting a late fee from somebody.
Yes.
Either would you connect it.
Yeah.
Okay, it doesn't represent that in the.
It doesn't, or, yeah, well, it it, because to my revenue, revenues are, are considered how they're identified, it shows it as a.
These are funds we collect, not paying late fees.
Okay, so then the, uh, we had paid, right? So then the non-sufficient, non-sufficient funds fee is something that if my check to the city, my bill bounces, then that's what that counts.
Yes.
Okay.
So, all right, somebody else paid that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And what?
I misunderstood.
What ordinance is that? What ordinance is that in?
Uh, it's, it's in the municipal code. Collecting late fees. You'll see that in appendix A for the fees.
Yeah, but you keep going immunity code and you need to start looking at ordinances and resolutions too.
The municipal code is a compilation of the ordinances codified, Ms. Laura. Uh, who do we have next, Ms. Bar?
So just real quick, is that late payment for one account?
Um, I would seriously doubt that.
No, I.
Those, those late payments would be everything for January from all utility accounts.
Thank you.
Specifically in the gas. Referring to right there.
Brian LaLander. He wanted to speak of PUC regulations and codification. Is that right?
Yeah, close to hell.
Hello, LaLander.
Hi, how are you doing, Charles City Council? Um, so when I was sitting up there, I had two main goals that I wanted to achieve. One was the municipal code, the other was a comprehensive plan. The reason that I wanted that municipal code so badly was, um, it had been my observation that rules had have been applied arbitrarily for many, many years. And when the codes are chronological, a stack this tall, it just was not very feasible. So we got the municipal code put together and Dan told everybody this is the starting point. There's going to be problems with this code. One of the problems with the code pertained to how the building is done with a little notice. You'll never find red tag, but you will find disconnect notice. If you go back in the gas stuff, the question that we had was never answered because there was an election and then you have a transition is does that code actually meet the PUC requirements? Because I think the PUC requirements go beyond your municipal code and require you to do a ten-day notice. And I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Mr. LaLander. Uh, who do we have next, Ms. Bar?
Uh, DeMay Sandoval.
I'm going to speak about the recall.
Good evening, Ms. Sandoval.
Good evening. Mr. Bryant, you wanted a recall, you got one.
Yes, ma'am.
You had your private meetings that ended up being known to those you and your group did not want involved. Your boss personally asked a council person to leave as she was not invited. The group continued to have their pri- private meetings until which point it was time to move forward with the recall of the entire council. All the time, those behind it knew full well that that was never the intent. Mr. Bryant and Mr. Jennings were never intended to be recalled. We saw that with the petitions which were eventually turned in. Not to mention the further proof we saw and received in talking with people who signed the council people's petitions, but in fact were never presented your petitions, Mr. Mayor. In addition, one of the petition circulators lied under oath in this very room that he had not texted for a person to sign only for Mr. V Hill and Mrs. Lars' petition. At the time, the proof was shown that he had in fact done that very thing. He commented, I only did it once. So positive, so transparent, so honest, so much for being under oath. Most people know the shenanigans and wrongdoings by the recall committee and how eventually those of us who were against the recall said, fine. This is what you want. We will participate. Then the tide changed when they realized we had the same power they were so willing to be proud of in who we wanted recalled and who we would pass petitions for. Several in our group were all in to pass petitions in all words and of course yours, Mr. Mayor. Watch the clock. I for one made it very clear from the very beginning in this very room that I would only be passing a petition for you, Mr. Mayor. A failed leader who threw his entire team under the bus. The same day of the protest hearing, our group submitted our signed petitions with well over the number of required signatures to recall you, Mr. Bryant. We did the hard work. We walked the community. We had the conversations with your community. We didn't have an elected official making calls and then passing on those names to your relay team. During this time, your recall group has stooped to some of the lowest standards and there you are giving them thumbs up. People in your recall group inciting harassment to individuals posting on social media approximate locations of where people live and where a minor resides. And there you were. A supposed leader in the community giving a thumbs up to the post. What kind of a leader are you? People who living, live in unfinished homes shouldn't throw stones. Our group has been called the he, she, man hater club. What does that even mean? A realtor in this community using those judgmental labels and name-calling? Exactly who is she representing when she speaks? The positive group? The real estate company she works for? Is that what she and the real estate company she works for think of those not like them? Is that what she thinks of her clients? And there you are going along with them. You call your fellow council members immature and yet you go along with the junior high bullying, the name-calling, the jealousy. You brought this to where it is today, Mr. Mayor. You should have watched what you asked for. Whether or not our petitions are deemed valid, the message is loud and clear. We receive twenty percent over give or take the required number of signatures from your community. That speaks volumes. I speak for myself. I don't speak for anyone on that dais. Related or not, because we all know Veronica is my sister. We all know Carmen's a good friend. I've known Nick all my life. Mr. Martinez is the postman. I don't really know Mr. Daniels, Mr. Jennings. I know of him. I speak for myself. Strong women don't need others speaking for them, doing the hard work or hiding or holding secretive meetings when they don't get what they want. We don't sit back and have others do the work all the while pulling the strings. We stand proud and loud for who we are, what we believe in and what we do. I do have authority here. The signatures on my petition were counted and I will not be silent.
Sandoval, uh, one thing you, you did bring up a lot of questions. You made it sound like, you know, there's an atrocious conspiracy i- i- if, if I may though. Uh, i- i- if I may though, we had a hearing officer totally removed from this area. Actually review, excuse me, actually review all of the issues that you just brought up. And she did not find them worthy to
Worthy.
invalidate the petitions and, and excuse me, but as far as elected officials making phone calls and such, I'm not sure what you're referring to as far as I had an elected official, but what's apparent is there's three elected officials somehow on a recall committee, yet they tell the public that's not against sunshine laws. So in this case, you actually.
Broke no sunshine laws?
Three, three elected officials making calls.
All accusations.
Excuse me.
Talk.
Excuse me.
The appropriate.
Excuse me. E- exactly right.
Recall.
So we'll go ahead and move on because I allowed this maze to go about three minutes over time. So Ms. Bar, who do we have next?
A minute. Gino Fox. So did the other ones, four and a half minutes.
Hello, my name is Gino Fox. I, I wasn't really prepared to talk. Um, I do, welcome, I think. Um, I'm kind of used to Mr. Hyde who steps in a lot more and, um, I know you're getting used to this position, but um, I want to thank Brian for making some things clear between the city ordinances and the municipal codes. I have, I've only met one more person than you, Mr. Moore, that is so nebulous. Your answers are so nebulous. It's disturbing to me. Um, Mr. Mayor, you did say in a meeting that if we got enough recall votes, you would just step down and I doubt that you're going to be honored that word because you're already saying that you're not going to. Um, and when people come up, I know we forget, Mr. Allen, please, which, let us know who you are. Um, I am curious about law enforcement. What's happening with that? Um, I have the same concerns a lot of other people do about our lack of law enforcement here. Um, I agree with what Carolyn said and thank you, uh, Dee for saying what you did say. I do have some good news. The train will start to get repainted when the weather is better. But the only good news I can actually say, I will say it, I was not prepared to say this. I really want out of my contract with Code of the West. I think Eric Andrietta, Sarah Jarnes are part of this big problem. They're behind a lot of this. Uh, my store is with this Code of the West. I'm so disappointed in their shenanigans behind the scenes. I was part of the original recall group. I was told I was hostile. I was part of the original recall group. I was told I was hostile. I never said one word to anybody. I had Jerry Ann Beehill get up here after I left that meeting and lie. She lied. She didn't tell you the whole truth. This town is full of new people. Who have come here, who want to be here. And are fighting for this community. We have the older people who have been here and I am so disappointed in this recall from the very beginning because you were all elected. And Mr. Jennings, it's nice to finally see you sitting in this chair. And I'm still waiting for that email I sent you asking for who your contracts are with, and I believe there are a lot with the county. County man, county man, you know.
That's none of your business.
Excuse me, this is my time.
Interest.
This is so disturbing for our community to have this happening. We have to rely on a former mayor to give us information about things that you are not giving us. So I'm asking you, please stand by your word. You said if we got the votes, you would step back. So this, this, this from you, Mr. Bryant. All this from the, from Erica's business on down and I still wish her the best. We still need businesses in this town. But all you, the people behind all this. You have disrupted what our city council should have been doing for the last year, working on the sick. And not this crap that's been going on. I wish you the best. I would like you to speak up a little bit more and I'm know, I know that you're learning. We're all learning. We, a lot of us care about this community. Mr. Mayor, I really hope you step down.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. And uh, once again, uh, there's a difference between a. Recall petition being filled out and somebody actually being recalled from office and. I will exercise my right to protest and. Will see uh, how things go, but thank you for uh, taking the time to speak with us this evening and to circulate a petition yourself. Who do we have next, Miss Bar?
Anyone else in house? Someone's a citizen's coming? Someone else in house?
Thank you.
Stephanie, I have a constituent that sent me a message that he's been trying to get on Zoom for 30 minutes.
Uh, who do we have first on?
Is anyone waiting?
I'm sorry.
Would you like her?
Oh, yes, Mr. Decker, can yours?
Yep. Hey, guys. Hey, Dee. Alan, good to see you guys. Uh, I would have been there, but uh, just getting in here. I'm settling into the tiny house a little bit. Um, just real quick, uh, Ms. Laura. The Muni codes are the compilation. I know. While Lander mentioned this as well, it's the compilation. So there is actually uh, thirteen eight forty-two. Um, first class. Mail or hand delivered to a, a person serviced at least 15 days in advance of a disconnect. So it's in the Muni codes, uh, thirteen eight forty-two, notice of disconnect, discontinuance. The 15 day notice, there are some leeways. If there's some basically illegal things going on, somebody tampering with the gas line or something like that. So that, that's actually in. The code. If somebody is not receiving a piece of mail or being told, then yeah, I agree that uh, getting service cut would be questionable. Um, I do, I do want to say, and I appreciate you actually having your citizens' meetings. I've been to one of yours. I can't remember. I have a question though. Somebody needs to be on mute.
I'd like to remind all uh, audi- audience participants on Zoom to uh, please mute their mics, uh, with the exception of the speaker up. Please, Mr. Decker, continue, sir.
Thank you. Um, I, I am curious and it's a, it's interesting because I know it even happens in many places I've been to, Denver included. Where city council members will have public meetings. Carmen, you, you kind of set. The, the level there and I'm curious to why. And I'd like to hear from the council members why they have not done their own. And Mr. Mayor, why have you not done your own? Meeting with people. Um, it's an important factor to receive emails and respond to those emails, but it's also an important factor to have public meetings. I'm actually curious if hindsight being 2020. Which it always is, had some of these meetings been held over the past year and a half. Would some of the. Situations going on right now been alleviated? So.
I'm in it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys. Uh, I know it's not easy sitting up there. And by the way, it's still looks really weird coming from the video versus actually having been in the office. And seeing the, the room. It's very, it's a very different view with the fisheye lens. So thank you, guys. And actually, I would like to hear from each of the council members why you're not having. Regular meetings with your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Uh, speaking for myself, I have uh, hesitated to have these one-on-one meetings because what I found in the past and from observing others. Elected officials. Have a bad habit of making promises singularly. And then the reality hits when you step on the board and there's six other personalities to deal with. That follow through doesn't happen and leads to a great deal of frustration. And uh, that's not to say that uh. I still don't speak to plenty of members in the community. Uh. That's uh, my stance on that. Uh, Ms. Laura, uh, I believe uh, you already hold those, so uh, we'll move on to Mr. Jennings.
I'd like to say something.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I do hold those meetings and I, I haven't had one lately with all of this mess going around and all the holidays and everything. But we talk about things and I. I get ideas and I ask citizens to come to council and voice their opinions and they are coming. And uh, so the point is to say we have water issues, we have billing issues. I bring those up all the time. So I am. You know, asking what the citizens want and relaying that information and also the fact that. I don't bring it and say, hey, why aren't you doing it? Except for one time I did tell you when I asked you if you would resign. Um.
Okay, the gentleman asked about whether we'd be taking uh, or why we weren't holding public meetings. That's been established that you hold public meetings. Uh, Mr. Jennings, do you mind ma- answering Mr. Decker's question?
Cutting me off.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we got to stay on topic here.
Well, yeah.
I've never really thought about it. Um. I don't know, maybe I'll see, I'll think about and see about maybe in the future. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Uh, Mr. Veo.
I do it with Carmen Laura and we've had good success with it.
Thank you, Mr. Veo. Miss Maze.
I was actually one of the first people to bring it up and I just. I'm sorry, but I have a lot going on outside of here and I dedicate as much time as I can to this, but if I received overwhelming. From citizens that that's what they wanted, I would definitely do that. And as we move through this recall election, I absolutely will be available to. Voters. Um, I do talk to a lot of people in the communities. Um, and specifically about what's been going on with this recall. People don't understand it. People don't know what they signed. People don't know what. So I will be out there. I will be in the public. I will take the time to have these conversations.
And we do sometimes. So there's only two at a meeting at a time.
I walk my ward every day.
Yes, he does.
And uh, everybody knows where to find me. I get talked to quite a bit. Uh, I try to keep it to a minimum when I'm on the job, but uh, like I say, everybody knows where to find me.
Yes, sir. Uh, who do we have next, Miss Bar?
Blair Stutman.
Good evening, Mr. Stutman. Uh, you may be muted, Mr.
Yeah, good, good evening. Yeah, um. I uh, would like to say first that I have some uh, some property and business down in the Northlands and um. Uh, Ms. Maze and, and Mr. Daniels uh, met with, with all of our, us landowners and business owners uh, down there. Go and it was really nice. So I appreciate that. And um, yeah, you should meet with your constituents here or there. You don't have to promise them anything. Uh. Yeah, that's, that, that should be a no-no, uh, of course, but uh. So anyway, uh, yeah, you guys uh. Got yourself in a pickle here in this thing. I tried to suggest to you to put your personal. Issues and uh, personal personalities aside because that's a very important thing when you got a bunch of people together trying to do something. You got to find a common goal and go to it, but. Uh, anyway, there's a lot of negativity between all the residents and everything over this recall and it's really, really a bad situation. So that's all I'll say about that. Um. I would like to thank everybody for trying to do what they're doing. Everybody's learning. Uh, I'd like to remind the citizens and um. And the council members, um, you know, I, I've seen. From the outside here, it appears that Ms. Uh, Davis and, and Mr. Moore has been beat up. To no end, you know? You guys act like all this stuff's their fault. I've seen mayor after mayor. I've been promised stuff that I was. Not. Able to do. Um. You know, I've seen. Multiple. Building inspectors come and go. City administrators. City council members. Um, these problems didn't start. And it's not these people's fault. It's not, you know, it, he, he can't cast blame. If we all don't work together and try to fix this problem. Half of you seem in that county want to, half of you don't. The good old boy and good old girl stuff has to stop. I'm glad to see a lot of citizens here now. It looks like there's thirty-nine online and stuff. I've been here when there was four people. So I, so I got to say, I hope we can pull through this thing. We will, but we all got to work together and look, it's nobody's fault. Just chill out. Let's get through this recall and. You, you got to work together. You got to put personalities beside somehow here. And try to make this town work for everybody and it's not going to be easy. But that's all I got to say. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stutman. Who, who do we have next, Stephanie?
I don't see anyone else raising their hand on, online.
Okay, uh, we. Don't want me to yell talk soon. We'll go ahead and move on to unfinished, excuse me, unfinished business, Town of Aguliar Utility Billing Discussion and uh, recommendation, uh. Ms. Davis, would you please lead us off on this topic?
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I say one more thing? I would like to thank. The new attorney and I forgot your name and welcome to Wallenberg and yep. Thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
So you have a administrative recommendation in your packet. Unfortunately, um, the Town of Aguliar was unable to attend this evening as indicated. Um, both Mr. Colander and myself spoke with them this morning and they. Had indicated they were going to provide some additional information last Friday. Uh, we are not in receipt of it. We requested it again today. We're still not in receipt of it. Um, I believe what you have in your packet is uh, some additional information in, in addition to the recommendation, but uh. The. Spreadsheet. Of what their payments have been. Uh, the alarming port. Part of this particular spreadsheet is that they're few and far between. Which is uh, how we've. Uh, obtained in twenty twenty-two, this uh. Balance in arrear. Um, I would. Strongly encourage you, this is alarming from not only a council standpoint, but administrative standpoint. We've heard from our citizens, it's somewhat unfair. Um, highly recommend and. Is in working with Ms. Vera, uh, she has prepared a letter. Specifically to town requesting a, an immediate response within seven days and. I would uh, highly encourage the council to take this tact. Um, I don't believe that another thirty day delay. From the. Town of Aguliar is appropriate, given the. Substantial uh. Balance that they're currently holding.
Uh, council member be willing to pose a motion uh, directing Ms. Vera to submit said letter.
I'll make that motion.
How so?
A motion by Mr. Veo and a second by Ms. Maze. Is there any additional discussion?
I just, I. I thought I understood last time they were here that they were paid in full. And nobody corrected that record when. When she said that, that they were paid in full.
Saying that.
She did say that. She did. She did say that.
I think the uh, clear point was, was that she had an outstanding balance, but uh. Sorry for that misunderstanding. Is there anything else? Yes, Miss Laura.
So what is that letter going to say?
Says that as a follow-up to its January sixth letter informing the Town of Aguliar that it was in arrears of sixty-one thousand, three hundred and forty for natural gas consumption in twenty twenty-two. As a natural gas supplier for the town, the city has always been pleased to deliver reliable and prompt service. Uh, the city, and, and I'm going to paraphrase some of this. The city must again reiterate its concerns to the town board regarding the significant outstanding balance on payment for gas supplies during twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have yet to receive a ta- a response from the Board of Trustees about the outstanding balance and in, if you will know that in uh, the end of December, first of January. I submitted a letter to the town board certified mail. They were in receipt of it. We've never. Received acknowledgement that the town board is actually in receipt of it. Uh, Ms. Abila appeared at the city council meeting on February seventh. The attached document was presented at that February seventh city council meeting. And demonstrates that the town's annual purchases and gas u- usage over time is consistent. And that the city has accurately billed the town for its gas usage. Uh, they, the town made a payment of twenty-two to twenty-six on February seventh. The town remains in arrears of sixty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. The city will take any and all action possible against the town for continued non-payment. Non-payment may result in a disruption of or discontinuance of gas service to the town and its citizens. If the town fails to enter into a payment plan that is satisfactory to the city. City requests a response within seven days of this letter identifying the town's position.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Uh, does council have any questions before we call for the vote?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Miss Laura.
So what would be, and we have a, a citizen out there that would like to speak. She may go before me if that's okay.
The citizens comment, time has closed. Right now is the time for council to conduct business, Miss Laura.
And this is an action item. Um. So what would we consider acceptable? Our payment plan.
Uh, until they present something. I don't know that we're in a position to identify what's acceptable. Obviously, what's acceptable would be if they cleared the account in full.
Yeah, that's what.
I think it's acceptable.
That's all.
I mean, they're billing their customers.
And they're getting paid.
So there was, there was a bounced check. Um, I don't see that reflected in your report. So was that the sixty-one thousand dollar check that bounced?
No.
No, and they, they covered that.
That was checking.
How much was that one?
I believe that was the thirteen nine eleven.
Hmm, okay.
There's uh, nothing further from council.
A quick question.
From Mr. Veo.
Are we charging Aguliar late fees?
There's a little bit of late fees on there.
That can, that's why their. Affairs continues to build.
It just has to end.
Ms. Bar, can you please call for the vote?
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Maze?
Yes.
Mr. Veo?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes. Hey, we had uh, moved new business item five uh, to the bottom of new business. So we'll go ahead and move on to approval. Or uh, excuse me, renewal of a marijuana license for uh. One oh two thirty-two, Inc. Uh, do we have a motion for this item?
Make the motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Veo, do we have a second?
A second.
Uh, second by Mr. Jennings, uh, council have any uh, comments or discussion? I see that uh. They got a clear return from the sheriff's department as far as uh, not having any enforcement actions and uh, to my eye, it appears that all other paperwork is in order. Uh, is there anything further from council? Uh, Ms. Maze?
This is just a, no.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Martinez?
No.
Miss Laura?
No.
Mr. Jennings?
No.
Mr. Veo?
No.
Uh, Ms. Bar, could you please call for the vote?
Veo?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Jennings?
Yes.
Ms. Maze? Nicole?
Uh, yes.
I guess.
Next up, we have consideration of a hydrant meter application from non-construction for water to complete the Werfino RE1 uh, school building. Uh. Ms. Davis, do you mind leading us off uh, on this?
So if you remember uh, back in. July, June, July, um, I believe I just stepped on as the interim city administrator. We had non-construction that approached the city to be able to provide them construction water for their project. Uh, based upon the inability to fill city reservoir and the fact that we were entering into. Um. A period of uh, water restrictions. Uh, the city was not in a position to approve that application. Uh, and in light of that, then the construction company set. Was able to lease some water tanks and have been uh, utilizing those water tanks and resources from outside. was able to lease some water tanks and have been utilizing those water tanks and resources from outside the community. Since we have been able to fulfill our responsibility to our citizens in terms of the reservoir and that we're in a much better position. Most of what they have required in terms of compaction and the amount of water has, is dramatically decreased or anticipating only needing sixty thousand gallons to complete the project, which is over the next eight to ten months, perhaps a little longer. They were wanting to see if they would have access to a fire hydrant and a fire meter, our hydrant meter, if the city would so choose.
Does council have any questions for Ms. Davis before someone poses a motion, Mr. V?
We've done it before for construction companies, long as we monitor the usage.
Because this is over an extended period, conventionally, you only, they have access to the meter for a couple of weeks, maybe a month. We're in a position, and they recognize, as I noted in here, that we would do monthly meter reads and bill them accordingly.
Mr. Jennings, do you have anything?
I agree with Mr. V Hill. And would there be some way to kind of have that being locked overnight or something, just so?
We're gonna have to have a conversation as to how we can manage it. My concern is I wouldn't necessarily want to leave it on the hydrant on a monthly, on a nightly basis, simply because it affords the opportunity for some vandalism and misuse. So we'll need to be able to follow through with what that's going to look like if this council so choose to approve it.
I have nothing else.
Any, Ms. Jennings, Ms. Laura?
Hey, so we just came off of water restrictions. Our lake levels aren't totally consistent yet. They go up and down and fluctuate, and I know they do that throughout the year. But I don't think we're at a point to where we do this. And instead of a water hall, I know they probably need a lot of water. At one time, why can't they do it through water hall like other people do?
It's the inability to have a consistent vehicle to transport and then have it in a location that's, part of the issue is they need to move those tanks because they're now in the construction zone. So they're looking to remove the tanks, make this more readily accessible, and then probably do some smaller, what would be referred to as like a water buffalo on site, so. It's up to the city.
Okay, I don't think we're settled enough in terms of our water situation to approve this.
No, I think this would be a good thing if we could help this, our local school district out. It would certainly save them money and the expense of having to transport water from Colorado City. And it's my feeling that with city reservoir being at capacity, yes, we will see some fluctuations, but it's not anywhere near the critical levels that we've all taken note of in the past. City reservoir being at full capacity. And to my knowledge, both Dieger and Waha Toya being in La Vida, and then both Martin and Horseshoe are also at a favorable level. I think that there is more than enough, especially when we're looking at sixty thousand gallons, which is a drop in the bucket in those reservoirs. Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Mays?
So in your recommendations, you have twenty-two dollars per thousand gallons. So where did that price come from? Because that's less than what residents pay for water.
That is by ordinance.
And so you have a twenty-five hundred dollar deposit. So they paid that deposit and they get that deposit back. So there's no wire, no tab fee?
Is, is correct. The deposit is specifically for that water meter in the event that it's damaged, lost, stolen, whatever. That's the replacement cost for that.
So we have, so they have no cost other than the twenty-two dollars per thousand gallons?
As per ordinance, that's affirmative.
So where I.
The water taps.
I mean, I wanna help them, but where I struggle with it is every resident, every month, has these huge fees to help us pay for the construction of that. But yet, we, on big projects like this, they pay less and they don't have to pay fees. Like, I just don't understand that, why residents continue to bear the weight of the debt for the city when construction companies that have this in their bids continue to just not have to pay what residents have to pay month after month after month. I just, I don't get that.
Hey, is there any other comments from council? Yes, Mr. V.
And the other thing, they're not gonna use the sixty thousand gallons all at once. So it's not gonna be that big of a draw on our lakes and reservoirs.
That's not my concern.
Oh, no, I know. I agree with your concern, but I'm talking to Carmen on this one.
Well, we don't know how much they're gonna be using.
The request is for sixty thousand dollars, as noted in the enclosure.
What happens if it's over sixteen thousand gallons?
I assume that they can come back and we can, and they can put in another request such as they have in this instance. Would, is there a council member that would like to make a motion related to this agenda item?
I was going to approve the water hydrant use application submitted by non-construction for the purpose of completing the interior finish work.
I'll second that.
With all safety precautions put in place.
Yes.
You have a motion by Mr. Martinez and a second by Mr. V Hill. Is there any additional discussion before we call for the vote?
I just don't feel it's right that they don't have to pay any fees like the defense do.
We probably do need to look at that sometime, though.
And just, I think that there was probably a difference when I was looked at as far as sort of the transitory nature of a construction outfit needing water on only a temporary basis versus a residence. I think that has to be looked at through a different lens, but aside the point of this conversation. Ms. Bar, could you please call for the vote?
Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. V?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
No.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hey, next up, we have a recall election discussion and recommendation. It's my understanding that Ms. Goldman is in attendance on Zoom this evening.
I am here.
Good evening, Ms. Goldman. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and let you lead off the discussion and the floor is yours now.
All right, I believe Ms. Davis has provided you with a recommendation regarding an election date. With your indulgence, I would ask her, since I don't have it in front of me, if she would identify the issues that need to be considered when considering this date.
So I believe that the biggest issues that we have moving forward is what I tried to identify in my, and I apologize, there was a second. There's another part of this, and there is only one page that appears on the upload. However, part of the concerns with this is that from a timeframe standpoint, if, as you have identified this evening, mayor, and in an intent for a protest aspect for this second phase. If the city council will not or does not consider the proposal as presented, which is for a May sixteenth timeline, then there's a strong possibility that the protest would push the second aspect, if it were deemed that it is a sufficient process for the mayor, that we would be looking at two separate elections. So in an attempt to make this the most cost-effective for the city, allow both administration and the people involved with the opportunity to really present an election that meets the criteria that is as transparent and effective as possible, strongly requesting a consideration for May sixteenth. That also includes the fact that we have out of country. There are eight participants that are eligible to participate in this that reside in different countries. We have to provide that ballot to them. And just the process of establishing the ballot and the language on that ballot is going to take a great deal of time. Because everyone who is in a recall position has the opportunity to respond in a three-hundred-word response that would be included in that ballot question as well. So the ballots themselves will be extensive.
No. Ms. Davis, aside from the May sixteenth date, it's my understanding that we'll also have to determine whether we want this by strictly mail-in or polling places as well.
Correct.
Speak to that further.
Correct. Thank you. I missed that point. Again, because of the fact that there are two wards as well as the mayor, we would be required to potentially have polling places in each of those wards in addition to, which again affords substantial more time and effort and coordination in what that looks like. A mail-in ballot might be a little more costly initially because of the number of ballots that we would have to make available. But those ballots could be returned to this building. We have not confirmed the opportunity to be able to use the twenty-four-hour Dropbox that the county has available, knowing that special districts also have a May election if they so choose to have elections. But those are usually done by special districts. So that ballot box might be available to us from a twenty-four-hour basis. We would have our own ballot boxes here that people could provide, that we would provide that people could come by and drop them off. And then everything would be counted and managed at this location versus polling places which require personnel to man, locations secured, et cetera, so.
So it sounds like the mail-in route may be the suggestion of administration.
That would be our recommendation moving forward. But it's, that it's just something that's easier to manage and, and hopefully be able to complete in, in the most cost-effective, time-saving mode.
I think considering our population, that is the best way to go as well.
That, that doesn't, yes, because our seasonal population don't have to come out and, and try to manage transportation. They can do it from their homes. There's a lot of benefits to that. And it's traditionally shown a much higher participation rate than polling locations.
Is there anything, I thought I had seen something, I could be wrong, that a recall election cannot be held within six months of a regular election? Is there a timeframe on that?
There is a requirement that does not allow the circulation or filing of a petition within six months of a regular municipal election, which would be in November. And that deadline is not being breached, or that timeframe is not being breached with this.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you have anything else, Ms. Mays? Mr. Martinez?
I don't have anything.
Then could you speak further to how the selection of election judges might work for this?
So a lot of times, the county has a consortium, if you will, of election judges that, A, have, have presented both the time and the expertise year after year after year. I can name probably a half dozen that the first approach would be to try to utilize some of those people. And then, of course, with Ms. Goldman's assistance, their training would be driven by that. They would, the expectation would be that they would be coming in with an expertise and an understanding, A, how to handle the ballots. And unfortunately, we would probably be counting them by hand. So that will be a process that, that most of them would be quite familiar with as well.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. R, do you have anything?
Well, the May sixteenth date would put us in that behind that six months. So we would be entering that six months. I know what you said.
It's, it's the petition period?
Yes, it's not the date of the election.
Petitions would be completed already.
The petitions are done. They, they were done prior to the hearing. There is, there, there is, it's, it's, they were filed more than six months from the date of the regular municipal election and more than six months from the end of anybody's term of office. So that is no longer, that is not an issue at all.
Okay, so thirty-one, four, five, oh, three, four, where it says if a regular election is to be held within one hundred eighty days of submission of petition, you, you have to do it before. So, okay, so that doesn't matter what it says here. So, okay, even though it's in writing here. The the fact that we've already had one round of petitions go through, and Ms. Davis did allude to this, to just one election. So now that we know that the mayor will protest his petition, how does that affect the election?
So your timeline is, is very similar to what we already experienced. That any protest directly affiliated with this petition has to be submitted by March first. It will come back to council for designation, again, of a protest hearing officer as well as a protest hearing. They, that date will be set at the, potentially, the, not potentially, but at the March third meeting. All of that, so by definition, inclusive of finding a fact, that should, should be completed by about the twenty-second, if I have done my calculations correctly.
So we won't set a date today?
No, you will, you have to set a date today, period. What we're requesting is that you push this as far out as is possible, staying within the confines of a Tuesday election and not exceeding ninety days.
The, yes, and if, if I can add on to that, the date you are setting today is for the recall of the four board council members whose petitions were found to be sufficient. So that would be Ms. Laura, Ms. Mays, Mr. V Hill, and Mr. Daniels. Now, you cannot, and, and, and then we have, you cannot actually set, if there is to be, right now, the recall petition for Mayor Bryant is valid. If there is to be a protest and a protest hearing similar to what went on last week, then there is kind of a, there's a fifty-fifty chance as to whether the petition will be sufficient. If the petition will, will, is considered to be still sufficient, then what you will do is you will come back and you will set an election date for that petition, which will hopefully be on the same date. You can't do anything until the protest period is passed, until we know there's going to be a hearing, until there is a hearing, until there's findings.
So what happens if someone appeals your fact of findings?
The, I anticipated this question. As, as you know, my findings can be appealed in district court. However, you can't, you still are required by state statute, and I'm very happy to quote it because I looked it up earlier tonight, that you must set an election date. You can go ahead and appeal it, and then the court can make the determination as to whether they're going to stay the election date pending their review. But you can't wait on the court to act before you set the election date. That's very clear in statute. And if you want me to read it, I'm happy to do it.
And so if, if the court says that they don't agree with your facts of finding, so does the election get canceled? Except for unless Mr. Bryant's petition stays on board?
Well, let's talk about what we know. If they decide that I've erred and made the wrong decision and that the petition Well, let's talk about what we know. If they decide that I've erred and made the wrong decision and that the petitions are indeed invalid, there is no recall election because there are no valid petitions. The issue of the mayor's petition is an entirely different thing. And then what you would do, since you would, since if if the court said that I have aired that the petitions are insufficient, they are invalid, then that goes away, but that still doesn't mean that the process for Mr. Bryant's, Mayor Bryant's petition goes away, in which case we'll go through this whole thing and you may set another election date and maybe what happens is the recall winds up being on the November ballot pending certain circumstances. The only protest you can file, the only appeal that you can file at the moment is is to a ruling that has already taken place.
Thank you. So Gage, just so I'm clear, so ninety days is the maximum. So you're saying May sixteenth, that's eighty four days. If we went another week, we'd be past the ninety. So that's why you're suggesting May sixteen.
It has to be on a.
So what do we need to do to make that happen tonight?
You need a motion.
I make a motion that we do the recall hearing on May sixteenth.
Recall election.
Recall election and a recommendation that it be done by mail in ballot.
Mail in ballot on May sixteenth.
So good. We had a motion by Ms. Mays and a second by Mr. Martinez. Gauging any additional discussion. Ms. Goldman, do you mind describing? I believe it's a different timeline that we have to abide by when it's a mail in election, but could you please explain the process, how citizens may go about obtaining and circulating nomination petitions to potentially get on the seat? And what that timeframe is? I can't recall off the top of my head now.
All right. What's an election date is set. Nomination petitions for people who wish to be in my term, what I call successor candidates in wards, what is it, two and three, or is it one and two? I I'm sorry, I don't, two and three, two and three, right.
And two.
I'm sorry, what?
One and two.
All right, thank you. One and two. You see, I don't live in Walsenburg. All right. So nomination petitions will be made available by Mr. Colander. And they are the exact same nomination petitions that one would use to run for office in a regular municipal election. And they require the same number of signatures, which is twenty five, and that number is in state statute. So they can be picked up as early as tomorrow. There will be an opportunity to circulate these petitions for twenty days. And on the instructions, that deadline is, we believe, March thirteenth. And they must be turned in. The signatures will be checked. So that is is the availability for people to get the petitions. Let me also state that the four council members who will be subject to recall will have an opportunity to create a three hundred word statement stating their reason why they should be allowed to remain in office. And I believe that I I talked to Mr. Colander about this. You will turn that statement into him. We haven't, I don't believe we've come up with a deadline, but what seems to be reasonable to me is to have that deadline be next Monday, the twenty seventh of February. The main purpose for that is we want to start getting the ballot format ready as much as we can so that once we know who the candidates are, we can send it off to a printer and make sure the ballots are printed in plenty of time.
So can we not be afforded the same twenty days that someone who's getting a petition to replace us?
The twenty days for what? To write your statement?
Yes.
I I I don't think you need twenty days, and that is really, that's really going to make it a lot harder to meet all the deadlines we need to meet to get.
So I have other obligations outside of this that I want to make sure I'm putting some time into this. I was already denied not being able to come to a hearing because there was no dates available. So I want to put some real thought into this, and I also need to know what words are going to be put on there against me that I'm responding to.
The words that are.
Rushed to do that.
Councilmember Mays, the words that will be on the on the on the ballot as you say against you are the exact same words that appeared on your petition. Nothing different, nothing more, nothing changed. And that is by state law. So you already know what that those are going to be. And writing the statement is not mandatory. It is optional. I dealt with several recalls where people have chosen not to put anything. I recognize that you have a lot of time, you you have a lot of obligations, as do we all. However, to allow twenty days to write a three hundred word statement is, in my opinion and in my experience, jeopardizing the entire election.
So you said by the next Monday, so.
Right. So basically, you have you have you have a week or six days to do it.
So if I might make a recommendation, if we could push it till the end of the week to March third, I think that would be a little more appropriate. That's not quite ten days.
Thank you.
Because we don't have, obviously, we're not going to get a lot back by next week in terms of successor candidates. But we can start the compilation of the verbiage based upon petition information. So.
I'm only making a suggestion. That's all it is. The ultimate decision is up to the elected officials.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Does counsel have any more questions or comments? We got a motion and a second on the floor.
So I would just like to know what set of rules are we going to follow? Are we going to follow the same rules that each of us had to follow when we turned in our petition? Or are we going to follow the same rules that were followed for the recall committee that they didn't have to complete those every single felt?
The instructions are included with the nomination petitions.
So they have to follow different rules. Got it.
And I believe the overarching is our Colorado State election law, correct?
I I indicated, I indicated in my findings that the sort of the basis is substantial compliance. And that is what needs to be followed. I I cannot speak to what you were told when you follow, you filed your nomination petition.
It was the same thing that you trained on.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's nothing further from counsel, like to.
I would just like to ask Ms. Goldman to stay on after our decision for our comments. If you could please stay on, I would like to make a statement at that time. And it's important for you, I believe, to hear it. So if you would please stay on after we vote here.
Thank you for that, Ms. Laura. If there's nothing further from counsel, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
To amend the motion to include the date for the statement. To March third.
Would you mind doing so since you had?
I will amend my motion, mail in recall election, May sixteenth. With the three hundred word, up to three hundred word statement from each elected official that's on the petition by March third and a business day.
That would be fine. Thank you. Good clerk.
Yes. My motion.
Hey, we have the amended motion, a second sustained. Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Yes.
Mr. V Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes. Hey, moving on to mayor and council comments, directions, actions, and reports. Ms. Mays, do you have anything for us to see?
Couple of things. When I seen First Choice on the agenda tonight, it reminded me of the whole parking lot incident at First Choice. Did they ever make payment on that? And did we ever follow up on that? I think that was before your time, but for some work that was done in their parking lot that we shouldn't have done, and we asked them, I believe, to pay half.
It's around seven thousand dollars. That was also on my email.
And they were supposed to, and I just wondered if anyone even followed up with them. If not, again, that's on the backs of the city of Walsenburg. So can we follow up on that?
And when and where? I mean, when and how much? I asked that question before too.
I have to.
And then my other question. So the Werfino Coalition, they had a meeting and I was unable to attend due to other obligations. But in their minutes, they talk about a tiny home community in Northlands. And then it talks about Dakota when they did their subdivision or whatever they did out there that they gave up ten acres for a grove, which I specifically remember this council denying. And so those kind of things are being put out in the community and they are not being talked about at this council. So I have some concerns about that, that there's things being said in the community. I mean, if you're doing a tiny home community, where's your water taps? Where's your sewer taps? Where's all that going? And when are you going to bring that to the city of Walsenburg versus announcing it to the public? And as far as that Dakota, if I remember correctly, Mr. Daniels had pointed out that there was a moratorium on grows in Northlands. So I'm not sure where that's coming from. Ms. Davis, I will forward you those minutes so you could follow up on those.
Yes, I'm quite aware of, and there are multiple concerns, particularly with the moratorium aspect of Northlands.
I just, I mean, it's just concerning when I see that in the community. And I'm like, well, we weren't, we haven't talked about it or no one's came here to talk about it. So I just wanted to.
So it's in Northlands, however, that particular operation is not in the city limits either.
It's not.
No, ma'am.
Do you have anything else?
Would they be tapping into city water?
It's it's a extended conversation.
Okay. And then the last thing was the U R A funds. Being the new chairperson of that, I would like to know what kind of money we're looking at as we move through, you know, the action plan of this money that we just spent. There was a budget that was brought to us. I asked several questions about it and I never seen it again. So I would like to see a U R, I don't have any to make that a motion. I would like to see the U R A funds broke out separately, what those funds are, what that budget is, so that we can plan accordingly in that committee.
No, second, and if we need.
A council member would like to pose a motion. We can certainly do that.
That was kind of my motion.
Motion and a second by Ms. Laura. Is there any additional discussion?
An addition on the treasurer's report?
Besides, just somewhere where we know what those funds are. Yep.
Hey, there's no further discussion. Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Mr. V Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Mays?
Yes.
Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
I have a question. How are that not city limits? If those people that live out there are people who are eligible to sign petitions for city?
The property in question is not currently in the city limits.
Both properties, Dakota Campgrounds and?
No. The.
The other one.
Tiny home. Correct. Thank you for clarification.
Mr. Martinez, do you have anything, sir?
I wrote in a report or whatever to the front office about what I think is a big water leak out by the truck stop in the Northlands. I don't know if anything is, I I don't see any activity out there, nobody digging holes. So I don't know if anybody checked into it or not.
I sent pictures on that too.
We have, we have identified, well, we are under the impression because of the amount of water that's up there, we haven't been able to identify its source. We replaced the fire hydrant and to fix that issue. And the water was present and it's we're just not quite sure where it's coming from. It's apparently above it, but we haven't had an opportunity to dig it up enough to find out.
Okay. Long as somebody's looking.
Yeah, we're we're lucky. I just haven't found it.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. And for my portion this evening, I had alluded to it earlier in the meeting, but with these congressionally directed spending requests period being open through Senator Bennett's office, and I believe Senator Hickenlooper has one as well. It's an opportunity for us to, I kind of look at it as a hail Mary for a lot of these large, extremely complex projects. Last year, Mr. Stambaugh had submitted an application, I believe it was through Hickenlooper's office for the gas transmission line. And as I understand it, in further conversations, of course, transmission line for fossil fuels wasn't necessarily at the top of the priority list. It's my opinion that this year's request should counsel choose to direct Ms. Davis to pursue it. I think our raw water line would be a really good one to take a look out there. It's, it is somewhat of a tight turnaround, March tenth being the deadline that those requests have to be in, but it is somewhat of a less formal application process. And there are a number of steps that a person goes through before ultimately being awarded anything. There's plenty of government boards that you have to jump through. The other requests that we did last year with or increased mobility features on Main Street, it was basically focusing in on the Walson and Seventh Street corridors. For that request, we had looked at replacing pretty much all the sidewalks, tho- those entire distances. That had actually made it towards one of the more final committees. But ultimately was not chosen for funding. But what are council's thoughts on how we might be able to best place this spending request? Mr. View?
I'd like to see us get to shut off valves around the city. When we have a leak, we can shut down parts of the city and not have to shut the whole thing down.
Thank you, Mr.
I'd like to see.
Mr. Jennings?
I'd like to see if we can do it on the raw water line. Because we do need to get that repaired one of these years. It's been fifteen, twenty years that, you know, we've been wrestling with that thing, and we definitely need that one fixed.
Yes, sir. Do you have anything else?
No.
Ms. R?
Oh, so many things. But the important, the shut off valves, that way citizens don't need to be without water. And also the raw water lines, at least one, we can get the steel line replaced. That would be awesome. And we'd still have the cast iron. And of course, we need water and sewer lines inside the city. So I say go for.
Thank you, Ms. R. Mr. Martinez?
Well, the priority has to be either raw water line or the incoming gas line. And maybe we would have a better chance with the water than gas. I don't know.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Mays?
So there's two joint informational webinars. I think they'd be worth going to, sitting in, hearing what, you know, what they have to offer and applying it to the best chances that we have of getting some of that money.
I suppose the most important question, Ms. Davis, I I know you're extremely busy. Do you think should counsel direct administration to submit a request? Do you feel that you'd have time to be able to do so?
So not only do I have time, but I have some better news.
Excellent.
That I'd like to to pursue a little further. I've been in conversation based upon what you had in my admin report in regards to Dagger Lake. I think there's some opportunity there, but in the conversations I had specifically with R J H is that we're exploring a less expensive avenue for the raw water line, and we think we may have identified an opportunity to accomplish the same thing for six to seven million dollars versus the third two that had been anticipated based upon another cost estimate. So with that in mind, I'd like to pursue that and and see truly what we're looking at. And how viable this is. It would prob, it would definitely be one line versus two. But I think we can do it for a larger than around a twelve or instead of the two twelves that we have, be able to accommodate it in a twenty inch. So.
Out of curiosity, this isn't like a relining sleeve optional? Cool, cool.
I I don't think we have much to reline or reset.
Okay. Would counsel mind presenting a motion to direct administration to pursue these C D S funding requests then? to direct administration to pursue, uh, these, uh, C, uh, CDS funding requests then?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, motion by Mr. Vio, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second by Ms. Laura, is there, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bark, could you please call for the vote?
Yes.
Please?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Vio?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Brian?
Yes.
Good.
Thank you, um, that's all I have this evening, uh, Ms. Laura, what do you have for us?
Uh, two things. First of all, I've been seeing things on, uh, animal control. And, um, I guess the lack of adequate space for all the, uh, dogs that are being taken up there. And so apparently, we don't have food for the dogs as well. Uh, this is all on Facebook, so I'm just repeating what they're saying. And I'd like to see if we could review the budget for animal control and see if these are true. Apparently, we don't have enough food, it's hard to find. Uh, maybe we need to look at some avenues of, um, where we can order, where it's, you know, doesn't cost as much, and, uh, we can have a steady supply of food.
Enforce the neglect laws.
Well, they're being taken care of, they are being taken care of, there's no doubt about that. It's just, if you go to Walmart, you see empty shelves for pet foods, I mean, and, you know, they have huge, long shelves. And when you can't find a bag of dog food or cat food, um, there is an issue, um, and I don't know if we can get a contract with someone. I don't know if Chewy does that, I do order from Chewy, and I don't have a problem, but I don't know how they would work with a governmental agency or city agency, so, um, but I think it does warrant looking at to ensure that we do have the correct funds and, uh, that we do have uh, an adequate supply of, uh, food for animals, and, uh, maybe we need to look into, even though we just remodeled that not too long ago, um, more kennels. Because a lot of people can't afford to feed their animals, so they're kind of, you know, being dropped off all over the place. So I, I think there's multiple issues, um, and I think it needs to be a comprehensive review on how long we are responsible. Uh, what our agreement or lack of agreement looks like with the county.
Why with a county?
I don't think we have one.
Only kennel in Werfino County.
Okay, I understand that.
So, um, we are currently, uh, housing county animals as well.
Right.
We're supposed to be doing that, but.
At the city's cost?
Uh.
That's an issue, that's an issue.
An issue.
There is.
As we are a city.
Currently no I G A or any agreement with the regards to, um, how the county animals are handled.
So again, the citizens of Walsenburg are putting the bill.
Yep. So, uh, not the length of much of the money. And going into debt, trying to handle all this stuff, so I'm really glad I brought this up, because I wasn't aware that we were keeping their pets.
There is a pet pantry that does, um, pet pantry in Trinidad, and they'll be doing it tomorrow with their food. Um, and I'll ask them what kind of availability they have to provide food for us. I'll, I'll talk to, um, the director tomorrow. What kind of availability they have, I know that the local, what is it, Los Werfenos, like, they were getting food from them for citizens, and I'll ask them if there's anything they can help us with for, thank you. Absolutely.
We need to talk about this again.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you could maybe put it on next time, next week's or next time's agenda?
I mean, it's getting a lot of, it's getting a lot of attention.
Yep, yep, comments aren't always very nice.
So anyway, uh, my second response is regarding this recall. Um, I was very offended by the response Ms. Goldman. Um, no credible evidence. I find that very hard to believe, I disagree with you. Um, I, you know, credible means it's defined as able to be believed. It's convincing, trustworthy, reliable. I consider myself that type of person, I try not to lie, I do things positively, um. The evidence that was given to you is the Colorado State, from the Colorado State, um, your How to Survive a Recall. Uh, this is a newer edition of the Colorado State, Colorado Revised Statute. Colorado Revised Statute thirty-one, one, all those other ones, which, from what I get out of this, um, is that doesn't matter what all of the laws say. They were broken and there's no recourse for us on these laws that were broken, so whether or not I file appeal, I need to do some more thinking on that, being that we just found out about it today. I need to kind of calm down and get my bearings again, but, um, wh- what you said, and, and Ms. Goldman, I don't know if you're still there or not, but, um, it appears no one was credible, including Ms. Goldman, because some of this information was also taken off of a webinar that she gives regarding signatures and recall petitions and a PowerPoint, and I have pictures on my phone of what she said, that no portion of the line, signature line should be left blank, yet they were. And so, um, you know, we're the ones gonna pay the consequences, um. You know, I work hard, to be honest, and I feel this recall committee, uh, that did all these petitions on us, um, have tried to ruin my name, our names. And, uh, you know, this is something that I take very seriously, because, uh, there are many people in Walsenburg that are good people, and I try to be one of those people. And I don't like having my name run through the mud, drug through the mud, or how, however you want to say it. Um, so I think that to say that this was, there was no credible evidence or testimony of any failures on anybody's part, even though there was not a county name, there was a lot of lines blank, addresses were not correct, people moved, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I can't believe that you're saying that I am not credible, or no one else that gave testimony was credible, because I'm insulted by that. I am a credible person, and you could stop doing this. Okay? Because I know you're a good part of this, so, anyway, I don't know, um, with all of these errors that happened, I think petitions should be invalid. And that's not what you found, you found us uncredible with our testimony, so, um, it seems like some people are not interested in the truth, but they will get theirs. You know, I don't know when, but they will. I also have, uh, been approached by people that, uh, are telling me that the petitions that they signed, they were told that they were signing Mayor Bryant's petition, and they ended up signing my petition and Ms. Mays's petition. Um, so, you know, I brought up the clipboard thing where they covered the name, so I couldn't believe that, I mean, people, if you explain things to them, they're gonna listen to you, because they're gonna trust you, and when you give them false information, that's not right. So, anyway, um, we'll have to see what happens, but, um, so, Mr. Mayor, you already said that, uh, you were gonna file a protest and you were not going to resign.
I said that I would be filing a protest, as is the next step in the process, Ms. Laura.
Okay, and that's what, if you want to do, but I have a proposition for you. If you are willing to resign, I will resign with you.
Like I said, the next step in the process is the protest.
And that's the answer I expected, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we can watch as you subject the taxpayers to a recall election, I'm sure here in a few weeks.
You are involved in this as well.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. That's enough. On multiple fronts, yes, ma'am, please continue, Mayor.
Uh, I think I was speaking.
Ms. Laura, do you have anything else?
No.
I didn't think so. Mr. Jennings, what do you have for us this evening?
I have nothing to say.
Proves himself again.
Mr. Vio?
I don't want to complain, so I have nothing to say.
Alrighty, yeah, and just to close, I would like to remind everybody, you know, this, uh, recall is divisive to the community, uh, whoever feels that, uh, the claims are, you know, erroneously made, but this recall against my seat I had mentioned political theater earlier in the evening, and this is a prime example of it, because hear me out, so that this, this board is willing to to put the citizens potentially to a second cost of a recall election, when with a two-thirds majority, you could simply remove me after a hearing.
And that is true, and I have all the papers.
Hearing, no. Could be problematic, because it has to be evidence-based, and I'll leave it at that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn, second.
Motion to adjourn in a second, all favor, aye, meeting adjourned.
Aye. Yeah. And I will.